It is Tuesday, November 10th, 2020. This is the virtual special meeting of the Commissioners of Rehoboth Beach. I'm calling the meeting to order at 3 o'clock PM. We'll do roll call among the Commissioners. Commissioner Susan Gay. Commissioner Dick Byrne. Commissioner Srinowski. Unmute yourself. There you go. Commissioner Patrick Gossett. Commissioner Jay Legree. And Mayor Stan Mills is here. We have a quorum. We're able to conduct business. Commissioner Pat Caluzzi is unable to attend today. Also in the room with me today is City Manager Sharon Lynn and City Solicitor Glenn Man Dallas, as well as some building and licensing staff. Welcome, everybody. We'd like to note that there is no correspondence has been identified on this subject. We'd like to identify members of the public that registered in advance to be able to speak today. It's Carol Everhart from the Rehoboth Beach Dewey Boots Chamber of Commerce and also Citizen Rick Perry. Don't forget in the future, if you read the agenda, it gives instructions on how to voice your perspective at future meetings. Welcome, everybody. The purpose of this special meeting is to continue discussions on policies for alternate dining opportunities, for example, on sidewalk dining during pandemic conditions beyond March 31st, 2020, 2021. And again, I want to emphasize that we are talking about, have been talking about dining alternatives during the pandemic and during a continued pandemic situation. We have yet to broach the topic of post-pandemic alternative dining sessions, and that will come up separately. With that, I want to turn it over to Patrick Gossett. As you recall, is kind of leading the way on this and is the liaison between the city and the Commissioners. He's done some nice homework and provided a support document. I will say, I hope you have patience with us. Conducting weekly meetings has been a little challenging trying to get support documents done in time and everything, but I think we're doing a good, good job. And frankly, that's why we don't introduce something and vote on it the same day. There's always a lag there so that we can get more public input and feedback, which is very valuable. With that, I'll turn the meeting over to Commissioner Gossett.
Thank you, Mayor Mills. As Mayor Mills stated, what we're looking at today is the use of our outdoor space from April 1st until the Governor's emergency order is lifted. And this is preparing if it is lifted. We have a policy in place that for outdoor dining at the current time up until March 31st, which is the expiration date of the ABCC legislation that allows for outdoor beverage service, sort of lifting of those rules somewhat of the current rules that are in place for the state. So this addresses the period beginning April 1st until the Governor's emergency as order is lifted. Basically, what we have done is just taken the policy that was in place at the end of last season where we provided sidewalk dining and then used the parking spaces for the pedestrian walkway. Most everybody seemed to be pleased with that application, and the city learned over the season how to best manage it and implement it and tweak it along the way. And I think everybody was happy with the results at the end of the season. So what we're doing today basically is just setting written policy to how to address those for some new users that may be coming online this coming season and just to remind the ones that had been participating in the past. So if you'd like, I just wanted to also talk a little bit about the timing of this so that we hopefully we can review it today and vote to approve this next week. That will also allow the businesses plenty of time to react to it and to get their, if you will, ducks in a row to be prepared for the next season. And we should be able to start accepting applications as soon as we approve this and redesign the application from last year and beginning February, start rolling out some of the permits. Again, this also is mirrored after a lot of the language that previously exists or currently exist in our patio ordinance, which currently also allows outdoor dining in our city. And just to mention, we do have 44 patios licensed in the city, so we do have a good complement of outdoor dining already that exists in the city, and this just adds to it. So if you'd like, I'll just kind of go through this to begin a little bit. I don't know if you want me to read it line by line, but I think I'll just open up the first couple of paragraphs here, so I'll just read from the document. Beginning April 1st, 2021, if the pandemic-related Governor's State of Emergency Order and the pandemic-related ABCC guidelines are still in place, the following policy for sidewalk dining on city property shall be in effect, subject to any changes in the Governor's State of Emergency Order. That could change at any time. The Governor is able to extend that order in 30-day periods, so there could be some opportunities between now and certainly April 1st that there are additional changes. We know the Governor just kind of relaxed those orders a little bit last week with bar seating and no need for reservations any longer. So this is adaptable to any changes that the Governor may make. Let me continue. The city will utilize a similar operating plan for sidewalk dining as was in place until November 1st of 2020 during the Governor's State of Emergency Order. An annual city-issued permit application is going to be available on the city website as it was last year will be required for an establishment to operate sidewalk dining. The permit for sidewalk dining expires when the Governor's State of Emergency Order is lifted. Again, this is, we'll follow the Governor's orders to see exactly how long we can extend this. The state or the city of Rehoboth Beach may also revoke the permit at any time for violations. The city will review and approve or deny any applications or all applications. The city will issue sidewalk dining permits, which may allow a food service establishment located in the commercial area to operate sidewalk dining on public property, subject to the following. Let me just go through quite a number of items, and I'll defer to you, Mayor Mills. Would you want me to read through each one of these, or how do you want to approach this?
I think we have time. I'd like you to read through each one, and perhaps the time for questions on each individual item is right as Commissioner Gossett brings it up.
Sure. So to start off with, the establishment serving food must possess a current city-issued business license. Any operation in the city has to have a business license. And the following four statements that I'm going to read that are part of the document are also contained in the application for outside dining that was in place last season. So that is, the establishment must not exceed total dining capacity requirements approved prior to the State of Emergency as established in the permit of compliance. Establishments must abide by all existing rules and regulations for food safety as directed by the State Department of Public Health. Establishment, if possessing a valid ABCC license, must abide by all existing rules and regulations for the service of alcohol as directed by the State Alcohol Beverage Control Commission. And the establishment must abide by all existing rules and regulations for food and beverage establishments as directed by the Governor's State Emergency Order. Again, those four appeared in our application for last year, and they're taken from the Governor's orders, as we know, whether it was Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3. So those may adjust according to his emergency order. To go forward, the current business license holders must submit a completed application sidewalk for sidewalk dining by February 15th, 2021. Now certainly, that is our goal to get those applications into the city so they can review them and approve them. Now, if there is a new business that opens in the city after that time, it certainly is not denying them the time to apply for a new license, but this is just a motivation to get the current businesses in place so the city staff can be ahead of the game in approving the licenses. All applications from establishments.
I have a question on that last item. Is it appropriate now?
Go ahead. Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. And Patrick, thank you for all of your work on this and getting it out to us in a timely way for review. Yeah, it's very well organized and well done overall. But I do have a question on this last item, number six. I guess the word "must" really jumped out at me. I understand that if there's a new business, as you just commented, but even our current businesses that have been licensed or are current and have not, you know, may not make a business decision until, you know, March or even into April for the summer season. Is that your intent, that if it's not done by March 15th, that they absolutely cannot? Or is it just, like you said, an incentive to try to get them involved?
Well, in talking with business, building and licensing, and also the city manager, this is a motivator, if I may add, so that there is nothing saying that a business can apply after that. But if it's in the hands of the city and the business can go forward and get the application approved, but they don't necessarily have to then engage in outdoor dining if they choose not to. But if everybody shows up, you know, we want to open April 1, and I turn my application in on March 25th, why is it taking so long? Well, 65 restaurants have all turned in their application at this time. So I think it's a matter of managing the quantity and quality of what we're able to do. Again, if you apply and are granted a permit but decide not to choose it, you're certainly welcome to do that. But this is an incentive to get the paperwork rolling ahead of time so the staff is capable of and has the time to approve it and review it.
That all makes good sense to me. Thank you. But I'm wondering if there's a word other than "must" that we could put into that line?
Shall.
How about, yes, shall or is required? Is required? Is that better with you?
Well, I'm trying to get.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm trying to get beyond the fact that it's not absolutely required. Yes, we want it to happen for all the reasons that Commissioner Gossett just articulated, but a word that maybe isn't as definitive as required or must.
Well, let me just say that it went pretty smoothly this past year, I think because it was new to everyone, including city staff here. We created this forum. The businesses, the restaurants complied with filling out the form. They drew their, sketched out their diagrams, you know, pretty, I'll say sufficiently enough for Dennis to go out there and meet with them and adjust anything that was needed. But if we're going to continue and go into a second year, we, these are the guidelines, and we're asking them to adhere to them as best as possible. So, you know, it's a matter of linguistics, you know, we can change that.
Well, I believe that the rationale for this is very good in that we don't want businesses, six businesses to apply February 15th, six businesses to apply April 1st, and six to apply in June, because then, you know, there's economy and renting and having these barriers delivered and installed all at one time versus multiple times. So I think there's a good rationale there. I understand what you're saying, Dick, and I don't know if there's a way around it or not, but I do think it does put the onus on the businesses to do some advanced planning ahead of time to try to commit so that the city can act on their permits in a reasonable
So I understand all of that. But then what happens to business that doesn't put in the application until March 1? Will they be denied under this language?
It shouldn't speak for city manager or building and licensing.
Again, we're not here to cut anybody off, but we do need guidelines. So these are the guidelines that we talked about. We also mentioned, you know, what if a new, I brought this up yesterday, what if a business comes in line, online, and, you know, June 1st? We're certainly not going to say no to them. So, you know, we'll treat them basically on a case-by-case basis, but these are the guidelines that.
Well, yeah, that's good. And maybe what happens, Dick, is that if somebody doesn't apply until April or May, then they get deferred until the next time barriers are delivered, which might be a month away or something, so that they're not getting delivered, you know, every four days or something like that.
And that makes good sense to me. If you don't meet these guidelines, you stand in line until it can be handled. And I heard the city manager just now, and I'm supportive of what she said.
Thank you, Commissioner Byrne. Thank you. Go ahead, Patrick.
All right, second page, beginning on point number seven there. Street traffic barriers will be used to create a pedestrian walkway in the parking spaces where the sidewalk pedestrian walkway has been blocked by sidewalk dining. To maintain the health, safety, and welfare of pedestrians, traffic barriers must conform to the city of Rehoboth Beach and DELL DOT public safety standards, and only the traffic barriers obtained from the city of Rehoboth Beach may be used. And now we come into a little bit of cost sharing here. The traffic barriers will be available beginning April 1st, 2021. Payment for rental of the barriers is at the expense of the sidewalk dining permit holder, and payment must be received by the city before the barrier is provided to the establishment. The rental cost per barrier will be equal to the cost of the barrier incurred by the city. So it's just a pass-along here. The city will contract with the business to obtain the best rental cost per traffic barrier. So whatever it costs the city, that's what it's going to cost the establishment to rent the barrier for the season. And again, it's cost sharing.
Patrick, I'm sorry. Can Sharon share with us what the proposed cost would be? We paid one low cost and incentive cost, so to speak, at the beginning, but the fee was going to go up. Is that an indicator of what they might be next year?
Yeah, so the, so you'll recall, we ordered 1,000 barriers. We have very good photographs of them, if you'd ever like to see them, coming in and leaving. And those barriers in May were at a cost of $30 each. The reason being, and Mr. Williams checked around with several different vendors, and the best line was Suburban Propane, who was willing to deal with us. And mainly, what they do is they contract out for big construction sites, large construction projects. So they don't have the normal use for those barriers at construction sites during the summer season. So that's why they were able to rent them to us at a low cost of $30 per barrier per They went up the barrier cost, each barrier, to $100 per barrier after November 1st because there again was a need for them. So, and it might be October 1st. But, you know, we were able to keep them through October 31, as you know, and they were just removed last week, last Monday, Monday a week ago, because they needed them again for the construction sites that are gone on all over the, not just the state of Delaware, but Maryland and wherever they rent them. The cost to the city, if we wanted to purchase them, was $300 per barrier. So we did purchase 50 barriers in the middle of the summer at $300 each, $15,000, hoping again to recoup some of that loss through the state and federal agencies in the future. We needed them, we purchased them, we have them stored here, and we can use them again. So I can only, you know, venture a guess to say next April, May, Suburban Propane or whatever establishment would rent them to us for a reduced price, because again, they don't need them in the summertime. So that's my best guess as to what we can do. And the city really needs to be the one sole purveyor of obtaining the barriers and then distributing them based on the city's guidelines and placing them actually to the restaurants. So we're not going to ask, you know, Joe and Dave to come get their barriers. The city will place them for them, but the city really needs to operate that whole process. And the city would rent them, and then in turn, the restaurant would reimburse the city.
So this is, this is a different program than last summer, where the city provided the barriers for free. I believe it's appropriate that the restaurants contribute something to this. After all, the city will be providing the labor to install them and take them up and water them and de-water them. The city will be providing the pedestrian pathway signs and any other signs. The city will be, there's been no mention of reimbursement for parking spaces. So if that's not mentioned, then that's something the city will absorb. So again, I think this is a reasonable deal for the restaurants. And Patrick, did you have anything further to say?
Just the aspect is, in talking to a couple of purveyors or restaurants, we're in agreement with this. You know, the city will not be charging rental for the parking spaces, so we will still absorb those losses, and I'm sure that City Manager Lynn will be able to budget more appropriately going into it, knowing the loss of projected number of parking spaces and that revenue. And, you know, it just is a cost-sharing aspect of moving forward with this program.
Thank you, Patrick. Commissioner Srinowski?
Sure. Mayor, thank you, and I certainly agree that there needs to be some cost sharing. But I am going to ask Sharon to check on the cost, because I was the one that helped find Suburban Propane, and the amount that I negotiated with Mr. Carroll before handing it off to the city was $15 per month. So if you could just double.
And, yes, and Commissioner Srinowski, you're correct, and I'm nodding my head because you were very helpful in that whole process in the beginning there. So if I'm, you know, off a little, I apologize for that.
No, no, that's fine. I just, I hope if he said it was going to be a lower amount, he didn't then increase it. I hope so. But no, I agree, there needs to be some cost sharing, and the fact that we're not passing on the parking revenue loss is a huge plus for the businesses.
Thank you. Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Byrne?
Thank you. Just to comment, I don't have a solution to this, and I'm not even wanting to be argumentative about it, because I think this is a very reasonable proposal that's here, and the cost sharing makes very good sense to me, you know, particularly with the city providing the labor and the signage, the parking spaces, and so on. I just, I've said this before, I think some of you maybe have said it, the attractiveness of these barriers leaves a lot to be desired. It can tend to look like a road construction zone rather than kind of the ambiance of outdoor dining. Now, I understand the DELL DOT safety requirements. I understand these barriers provide all of that important safety that we have to have. And I also understand that with COVID, we're talking, you know, hopefully temporary, you know, it's one more summer season, so be it. But I just hope down the line, if, Mayor, when we do sometime, get to post-COVID outdoor dining discussions, that as a city, we'll be able to talk about safe opportunities for barriers but attractive opportunities for barriers. So just that comment, thank you.
Thank you. I'd even be happy if all the barriers were orange and not orange, white, white, orange, 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 white. Commissioner Srinowski?
Yeah, just to tap on that, and again, we've talked about street cafes for months, and I don't want to rehash it, but I agree that we, I wish we went in that direction. And I do think it's more aesthetically pleasing when we allow people to build barriers and platforms and use planters, et cetera. And I hope that that's the direction we went, but we didn't, and that's what it is. But I agree with Commissioner Byrne from the aesthetic standpoint.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Gay?
Yeah, I'm just curious, from an aesthetic standpoint, and maybe you said this and I missed it, would the restaurant have an option to do some planters? I mean, not obviously in the barriers for the pedestrian out in the street, but would they on the sidewalk be able to do like a few of them did this year with attractive barriers of their own?
You mean like claws, having their own plant?
Exactly.
That's not a question in front of us. We're talking about the separation of pedestrian pathways and traffic lanes being the heavy plastic barriers.
Right. I understand that, but I'm just asking, and maybe that's later, that they would have the option to make it as attractive as they want to, their own space on the sidewalk, if they're using the space on the sidewalk, right?
The answer is yes, because that follows the program from last year, yeah.
Okay. I do, I think, otherwise, I do think, I think the model is a really good one. I think the cost sharing is very fair. And as you point out, it is, we hope this is temporary.
Thank you. Is there any more comments? If not, before we go to number 10, we've just gone through items 1 through 9. I do have a, I might have a comment later, but we've gone through items 1 to 9. Let's go to the public. If they could address any comments relative to items 1 through 9 at this point, and then we'll do another session later. Carol Everhart, please.
Yes, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Having done the survey with the businesses, the dining, downtown, I think the February 15th date is a good goal. Most of them clearly said that they'd like to do it sooner than later. So if they have a date, if it's due by then, whatever word is used, I do not think that is an issue at all. I don't think the business license applying for that is an issue at all. I did not get any indication of anything other than that. Paying for the barriers, they were clear with me that they expected there would be some expense associated if they were allowed to continue to have the outdoor dining, especially into the parking areas. So I don't think any of that is a issue, to my knowledge. And I did have a question about the, so whether the barriers are owned by the city or they are rented from another company, is the expected expense to be somewhere between $30 and $50 per barrier? Is that what we believe?
We don't know. We don't know right now, Carol.
Okay.
But, but do remember, every time we say this, we need to, uh, clarify it's per month.
Yes.
And so we're talking about, we're talking about a timeframe from April 1 to November 1, April, May, June, July, August, September, October, November, seven-month period.
Uh-huh.
Because we would not, we would not want to take them up in the middle of the month.
Right.
So they would, they would be committing to a seven-month period, is that correct, Sharon?
Yes, unless, uh, the state of emergency is lifted, and you have that here in this policy, but, um, it'll be up to the commissioners as to whether that continues or not.
Correct, correct.
Okay, I know I'm going to be asked, that's why I'm asking. So I, I think, um, I have enough information to provide when asked, and, um, I'm not seeing a problem here with what you're proposing.
And, and just if I might add also, um, Carol, you know, the number of barriers will be determined by city staff. So, you know, Joe might need four, and Dave might need eight. So, you know, we'll have to determine what's appropriate there.
I understand.
Uh, city manager, can I ask a question on that part?
Yeah.
Um, if we have, we have a restaurant, um, with two retail spots in between another restaurant, both restaurants want it, is the intention that we would block off all four businesses, or?
So what we did this past year was, you know, also, we created those ADA makeshift rampings, and that was determined based on where the entryway was to that particular restaurant, where the sidewalk at the end of the street came into play, so, uh, yeah, some of that will have to be determined out in the field.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I can't just answer that question, uh, without, you know, a specific spot.
Understood.
Thank you. Carol, were you finished? Do you have some more?
Yes, sir, no, that was it.
That was it, thank you very much. Is it reasonable that we could, uh, check with a company to see how much the barriers might rent for, for a seven-month period next year?
Yeah, we can certainly look into that, yeah, see if, uh, they're, um, going to give us, uh, Commissioner Srinasty's, uh, price or something else, even maybe less.
That, that would be great for, uh, our next meeting, thank you very much. Uh, no other question, uh, is Rick Perry on the line? Not here, so, uh, thank you, Carol, uh, we'll go back to Commissioner Gossett.
Thank you. Um, continuing on, the next four points from lines 45 through 55 are taken directly from our patio ordinance, uh, which again is the aspect of other outdoor dining that is permitted in the city currently. And that's, uh, food and beverages may be served only to seated patrons, there shall be no live entertainment on the sidewalk, there shall be no external speakers or amplifiers on the sidewalk, and no internal speakers from the premises are to be directed to the sidewalk, there shall be no bar on the sidewalk. If alcohol is served with a valid Alcohol Board Control Commission permit, a physical barrier to separate the tables from the pedestrian walkway and define the sidewalk area are not less than 42 inches high, constructed of wood, concrete, plastic, wrought iron, dense vegetation, or other materials approved by the City of Rehoboth Beach, must be in place adjacent to the tables closest to the curb line. Basically, that's just establishing that barrier between the steps, between the tables, uh, closest to the curb line and the actual pedestrian walkway, and this is an element that's part of the ABCC licensing requirement.
Uh, Mr., Commissioner Gossett, let me ask why we're putting the onus on the city to determine that when that's part of the application that, that they send to the ABCC?
The ABCC, as I understand it, will approve the application once, as following along with our permanent compliance, that we approve it, and they basically will then rubber stamp it. But it has to go through the city first with the city's approval. I believe that's how Commissioner Corddry has addressed all in the past.
That's right.
I'm fine with that, thank you. Uh, Ed, did you have any more comments? Your hand's still up.
Uh, no, I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to think from a practical standpoint what businesses were using this year, um, because I know some of them were using, you know, structures, you know, planters with rope in between, um, I think was pretty common, and I'm not sure that that, that would be permissible under the language here.
Well, I think we say other materials approved by the City of Rehoboth Beach, so again, there may be a little closer lens this year than last year by ABCC, um, as to how those, um, partitions or, or barriers are, are placed.
That's, that's fine. I just wanted to get some clarification from the practicality standpoint.
Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner Gossett.
Going forward, there shall be no food or beverage, uh, preparation on the sidewalk, uh, except the next two points that are taken, um, from our earlier, uh, policies that we designed for the current aspect now until March 31st, is that a separation between tables of eight-foot minimum is required, and tables and chairs must not block any entrances or ADA-accessible areas. Uh, sidewalk dining permit shall close by 11:00 PM and vacated by 11:30 PM. Umbrellas shall have a maximum diameter of eight.
Patrick, let, let me comment on that real quick.
Sure.
Uh, number 18, sidewalk dining permit area shall close by 11:00 PM and vacated by 11:30. Uh, I'm fine with that, that's, uh, indicates seven days a week. I will just remind everybody that at the last conversation we had, uh, it, it was brought up that the weekdays would have a different set of closing rules, uh, that were actually a little earlier. So I just wanted to remind everybody that that was actually brought up before, uh, and if you're okay with, uh, all seven days closing at the same time, uh, then, uh, say nothing. I'm good with it, thank you very much. Patrick?
Uh, hearing nothing, we'll move on. Um, let's see, umbrellas, we talked about, shall have a maximum diameter of eight feet and must have a weighted base. Tents or canopies with outsides may be used on city property if approved in advance by the city manager. And, um, next point, a little long, but I'll, I'll certainly go through it. The sidewalk dining permit shall not be in effect unless and until the applicant files with the city a certificate of liability insurance confirming that the applicant has procured a policy of commercial general liability insurance issued by an insurance company authorized to do business in the state of Delaware. The policy shall provide in substance that the insurer will defend against all claims and lawsuits which arise and will pay any final judgment of a court-competent jurisdiction against the city, its officers, agents, or employees. The insurance shall provide coverage in the amount of not less than $1 million for each single occurrence. The policy of insurance shall name both the applicant and the city as insured parties to the full amount of the policy limits. If the policy is not kept in full force and effect throughout the term of the sidewalk dining permit, the permit may be terminated by the city upon providing written notice of termination to the applicant. Now, that's very legalese, and our city solicitor helped me, uh, prepare that, but basically what that boils down to is that the establishment would obtain a rider on their current sure, insurance policy to, uh, meet these standards. And I don't know if Glenn, if you want to expand on that, or if anybody has any questions?
Yeah, I mean, that, that, that's really what it, what it is, it just ensures that the city is, is named on insurance policy to the extent that there are, um, matters that, you know, in, in injury or, you know, maybe vehicle damage or something that's caused, there's, there's some coverage availability for the city. So, and I, I've looked at the language, and it's, and it's appropriate, as, as Commissioner Gossett has it crafted.
Go forward, um, next is the sidewalk dining permit shall not be in effect unless and until the applicant files with the city a complete and valid waiver of, of indemnification agreement. And that's part of the application, uh, that, for outside dining, the permit that was also in effect for last season. Um, the city code enforcement officer will be responsible for monitoring and assuring compliance and reporting findings to the city manager, mayor, and commissioners. And finally, exceptions upon the demonstration of need or hardship may be granted in writing by the city manager. And that kind of wraps up the policy as it, as it's drafted.
Thank you, Patrick, uh, good job. Uh, is there any comments from the commissioners, department staff, attorney? Uh, if not, I'd like to turn to the public. Carol, are you still on? Would you like to further comment?
Um, what you're saying sounds within reason, uh, even when we have an event, we have to provide, uh, the insurance and indemnify, so, um, I don't see any issue there.
Thank you, Carol. Uh, any other notes by the commissioners? If not, what I'd like to do is, uh, schedule the next meeting for November 17th to further talk about this and, and seek to finalize this policy and vote on it and adopt it formally. Uh, and then, uh, so that may be a short meeting perhaps, uh, and then I'm looking ahead to November 24th, uh, to, uh, introduce the topic of post-pandemic alternative outdoor dining opportunities. Uh, in that case, I would like to assign the city manager, uh, maybe to work with Patrick, but the city manager to, uh, offer first, uh, foundation of post-pandemic rules and, and, uh, a vision, uh, so that we can work from that starting November 24th. Um, any comment on that? Commissioner Gay?
Yeah, in the sense, I may not be here on the 24th, um, but that would be, you're saying that would be a, basically a first look at, um, the next, next steps, so.
Yes, uh-huh.
There is, there is a chance that I'm going to be in transit that day and will not be.
Is everybody else okay with that date?
Yeah.
I'd like to keep the momentum going so we can get this done before the end of the year, if possible, and no rush, uh, but I would like to, uh, set that as a goal. Thank you, Susan. Uh, I would like to, uh, uh, offer a few notes before we adjourn. Uh, today I had a call with the governor, uh, there's a governor's call every other week generally, where the governor talks with the mayors of the different towns. I would like to share with you some of the things that came out of that today's phone call. Uh, during the call today, uh, the governor noted the uptick in new cases statewide. Sussex County continues to have the highest number of positive cases centered in certain areas, and it seems to be unstructured environments continue to be the most concerning for the pandemic spread. The governor stressed the importance of smaller gatherings for the holidays, wearing a face mask covering, social distancing, and of course, washing hands. Uh, want to remind everybody about the COVID Alert DE application, uh, to help fight against COVID, because it supplements work of the, uh, Division of Public Health Contract Tracing Teams. For more information on this, go to the cityofrehoboth.com website, and you'll be able to access, uh, much more information on COVID, including, uh, the state site there. Um, uh, also, you'll find on that, a, a complete list of, uh, community testing sites. Uh, we've had, uh, testing right here in our own parking lot in the past, and it seemed to be very successful. Uh, to date, there's, the positive cases are, are just short of 27,000 in Delaware, uh, where just under 720 individuals have passed away from coronavirus. Uh, again, consult, uh, cityofrehoboth.com for more information. Uh, with that, uh, if there's no additional comment by the commissioners, yes, sir, Commissioner Byrne?
Yeah, Mayor, just a question. Um, I understand the timeline that you laid out, that after next week, you anticipate we'll be getting into some post-pandemic discussion. However, I, I'm hopeful that, that before we do that, or at some point, um, as you deem appropriate, that, that there may be some more discussion of during pandemic, for example, other incentives that we may want to discuss. Um, I think an analysis, an evaluation of Meterless Monday, um, you know, was that a good thing to have done? Is it something we may want to continue? Um, you know, those kinds of concepts dur- dur- during the pandemic time.
Very good, I think we could squeeze that in, uh, the next meeting. Thank you, Dick.
Thank you.
Anybody, Commissioner Legree?
Yeah, I just want to throw in that I'm sure we're all aware that yesterday there was phenomenal news that came out concerning the vaccine that is being developed by Pfizer. They have, uh, phase three trials, and they have found that it's 90% effective, which is, which was totally unexpected. As you know, when we go get a flu shot, we're looking at 40 to 60% effective. The only other vaccination that anybody knows about, viral vaccination that anybody knows about, that is as high as 90% that we all talk about, is, is the measles vaccine, which is 97% effective. The only thing they don't know yet is what happens in the long term, and that's, that's what they're trying to find out now, but, uh, that was just very good news, very good news. And being a holder of Pfizer stock, I was especially happy. I think we have.
All righty, thank you very much.
Keep ourselves updated.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Legree. Uh, if there's nothing else, I want to thank you, thank you, Carol, thanks to the commissioners and the staff for being here and participating, and, uh, this meeting is adjourned at 3:46 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.